Because we know the Penn Street of Lewis is going to need to be done. So, again, I may not understand the general infrastructure long-term terminology. But as I understand it, I don't think it's what I would call long-term.
Anybody else? Trustee's audience. Could you say your name and address, please?
Carol Coleman, 129 Acacia Circle. Couple things. I know that Black Hawk was done with federal funds because it was considered a collective street. And when we, with the help of the village engineer at Stanton, we went out and we were able to designate Acacia Drive as a collective street. So in the future, if federal funds are available, we will be able to get federal funds for Acacia Drive. It's too bad Acacia Drive doesn't mean a lot of work based on this, but for the future, that would happen. But I know we talked about, and I don't know whether it should be, of trying to get Cascade designated as a connector street as well. I think that's, if we could use federal funds, again, we didn't, I don't think it was completely paid for Black Hawk, but the funds might be there to do Cascade, which does mean a lot of work. Just a suggestion or something to investigate. I know, I don't, I can get a financial report. We have water fund reserves. I don't know if they were taken into consideration when doing cost estimate because there could be quite a bit of money. My understanding, there's quite a bit of money in the reserves. And secondly, if we do anything in Ashbrook, have you, I know you're probably not at the point yet, of trying to coordinate something with the LaGrange Highland Sanitary District because if you're doing sewer, uh, streetwork over there, they're the ones who took the water and sanitary sewer, so that would be something that would have to be pursued. But maybe at some point, they should be brought in, that could they, and we're talking about maybe raising rates, they might have to raise their rates to pay for some infrastructure costs that they might not need to do there.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Dan McCarthy, 11150 Ashbrook Lane. Frank, we, this water system, is there a difference in what the village gets billed for and what we collect? If there isn't difference, is that leakage? What the point I'm getting at is that these water meters that I see on here in item seven, I think the bill is $270,000 to replace it? Is that to try to see if we have leakage?
No, that's eventually, the water meters are in the house, if I'm correctly from wrong end. The tops eventually of these water meters will need to be replaced. It's not that we're getting leakage, it's eventually, we're not going to have parts, am I correct?
That's right.
When these water meters start to break and not work because of the, as the industry changes, it's almost like the computer world. This computer is outdated, now these water meters are going to be soon outdated, so we have to start looking at replacing that, not to do with leakage, but when a water meter goes, we may not have parts to fix it.
Isn't it also that the newer meters can be done, radio?
Radio, electronic, yes. If you're going to go, if it were replaced a few miles ago, would have better system.
Currently, we have to.
We have to fidgety go and walk by each resident.
Is there a leakage? Do we know? Is there any numbers that?
No, I think we had one, am I correct, Ed? But we pretty much found it.
Yes, we had several leaks.
Several leaks, and we corrected them, and now our water is pretty much right there.
Right.
So, yeah, so we're very tight now.
Anybody else?
Tom Hoppers, 6437 Cherokee. Dean, first of all, thank you for putting together the list of the capital two lists. The amount is pretty staggering. It also is a little meaningless for me, I'm not so involved in the operations, I don't know how to estimate a water main or anything like that, I don't pretend to do that. But I think what would be helpful, especially if we can open this up to a public forum in October or November or whatever, and it's probably something we've already done, help maybe the public, maybe focus things. Everything I hear is not as important as others. Some things have different uses, some of them just have to be done because of the replacement, like these water mains, Tom said there's going to be some benefit, he said there's going to benefit because of the radial frequencies. There's a return on that, it's going to save money. We just, I think if you could organize it, descending, you know, more and more things in your own prioritization, as well as classifying as to what is replacement, so there's not a whole lot of discussion about that. But maybe it's more interesting discussions about, you know, this, this, we're making an investment here too, and what we can start.
Good, I think that's something that trustee Whittemore had mentioned once. She mentioned that Ed could give us some input of what we think is really important and why.
Yeah, because to help the public, you have a hundred people, have ninety-eight different opinions.
Correct.
So we need to know where our elected officials stand on this issue.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Norman Kramer, 11135 Glenbrook Lane. I would like to sense more urgency in dealing with all of these things that we have in front of us. On the subject of financing, supposing we got a tax increase, supposing we got, we're going to see the money for how long?
Oh, generally.
Two years?
Not, it could be a year and a half, but typically the second year after such increase ends.
Then on the subject of the streets, my opinion is that the street deterioration will not stay the same, but rather the deterioration will accelerate, combination of winter, snowplows, and general breakdown. I think we need to go at this much harder than we are.
But I think, like you mentioned, some of the top streets that we had mentioned, we know they're about at, at their last, their last stand. You know, so we are. And I don't know, Mayor, maybe you can report here. Well, if we did get a referendum passed, does that prevent us, do we have to wait to two years, or we can go out looking for the money, knowing we're, you know, the deep or, I'm not the expert on this, but no stretch of imagination, we could probably do something sooner.
Well, the thing would be to identify how much money that we were going to spend, and how much, and then determine how much money, how much you're going to spend, let's face it, to get as much done as you want to get done, you determine that amount, like how big a house are you going to buy? And then you go out and take a loan for it. And to the extent that you have some money to put down as a down payment, using the house analogy, we use the money on hand, and we take a loan, and structure whatever loan, or if we had, like, for example, a street bond. We know, in about two years, that money from the property tax to pay off that bond will be coming into the village, and we can make the payment. So even though the money won't be, you know, readily available, and Treasurer, you say, correct me on this, I looked at it as, as two years out before you see the money. It could be a little bit earlier, it just depends on, you know, when you're going to take, when it would be approved, for example, at a referendum. So you, once, what we still have to do is to identify what we want to accomplish, how much it's going to cost, and how long do you want to take to pay off the loan that you're going to ask people. How much, how big a property tax increase will the neighborhood withstand, is what it boils down to? And as big as you can make it, that gives you a chunk of money, you either, for a given period of time, if you've got a big chunk of money coming in, increase, you can borrow more money and get more done, or you can keep the borrowing lower and pay it off much more quickly. But when it's tied to a bond, when the bond's paid off, the money goes away, and you have to have people vote on it again, which was one of the things that, you know, prior to here, we had tried to get across, and were, you know, obviously not successful, just approaching it as a general increase, so that the board, who's responsible to the village, could then use the money and earmark it toward the different projects. In nineteen ninety-six, there was a street bond that got paid off, I believe it was at the end of, I wish Dave was here, was it the end of twenty twelve?
Twenty eleven.
What was it? So, and the bond was, the referendum was approved in ninety-six, the bond was taken in ninety-seven, we paid more property taxes until the last payment was made, which ended at the end of twenty-eleven. And then that part of the property tax bill went away, and we don't, because we don't owe that money. So if we're going to do a street bond, tie it to the streets, or maybe it could be infrastructure and streets, however, now I'm getting ahead, I'm just trying to answer the question, Ed. We can tie it directly, or we can make it a general increase, we earmark as we see. We may decide, here's streets one through nine that have to get done, and these, this four thousand feet of water main, and these other short-term projects, but as time goes on, and we haven't quite fixed everything, street number ten suddenly jumps to where it would have been number eight, given its current condition. And there might be something that we were going to do because we prioritized it that way, and it was just our judgment at that date that we made the determination, based on the facts available, that by two or three years later, we decide, you know what, we could let that go for a couple of years because street number ten really needs to be fixed now. But we've got a stream of money that we borrow for the general fund, we have the money there to spend, and we have the income coming to it. So there's, there's going to be umpteen different ways to go about it, but the difference between a general fund tax increase is the money comes in, and the board decides how we're going to spend that extra money in borrowing this part of it. Tie it to a street bond, the money comes in, or a water main bond, or infrastructure, whatever you call it, money comes in, it's got to be spent for those purposes, and not need that or identified at the time people voted, and not for other things.
You referenced the bond from ninety-six, ninety-seven, so it sounds like it was fourteen years to pay off, my math is correct?
Yes.
Or fifteen, fourteen? Do you remember, was that a million more?
I don't remember. Yeah, Dave probably would recall, but I don't.
Chris Trillo, 6477 Thunderbird. Just speaking of this gentleman's sense of urgency here, you know, in terms of floating a bond, you know, that's I've been doing for, you know, the last fifteen years, and you know, rates are at historic lows. And earlier this year, they went up a whole percentage point within a month, actually a few weeks. And, you know, in the city of Detroit, you have Chicago, all that is not going to help out with future financing up here. And we have to do it quick, because, I mean, essentially, it looks about three point seven in short-term, you know, loan meaning, every percentage point is thirty-seven dollars per year, three percentage points over a hundred thousand extra. So we don't know when this is going to happen. I mean, this week, there was a hundred billion dollars worth of corporate bonds, which is telling everyone that corporations know that this is the bottom, and it's going to happen sooner or later, it's going to spike up, and it's just going to cost us a lot more if we don't do it soon.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That was my feelings behind the referendums last year, when I said, we do it now, or we do it later, and the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost. Interest rates were lowered, and as you point out, it jumped up. But, okay, people are uncomfortable voting to pay more taxes. I understand the thinking behind that, agree with it, didn't agree with it last year, but that was people's choice, so we'll go forward. But I, I agree with, you know, trying to get this done, been trying since, that's casual, going forward. Anybody else?
Lou Mead, sixty-five oh one, funny. First of all, I just wanted to echo, I think this is a great start. I mean, you have to have a plan, and we have a plan, how we pay for it, that's the challenge. But, you know, some of, some of us, you don't have to convince. I mean, I would pay, you know, higher taxes, I would pay, you know, higher sticker prices, whatever, if I knew that it would lead to better infrastructure, 'cause, you know, most of us made a significant investment to live in this community, we liked it, we hope it kind of be here a long time. So I'm just wondering, it sounds like you folks can do the best job in the world, but if the residents aren't on board, this is going to be really hard to do. So is there a way that we can frame this to make it personal to people? If we don't do this, you know, to make people care a little bit more, this is going to affect your property values, this is going to affect a lot of things on your bottom line. And I'm not so sure a lot of people see it that way. I mean, they, you know, maybe they don't care as much that, you know, certain streets are paved, or that the water mains are good, but, you know, I don't know if they realize that this is really going to hurt them in the long run. And I, maybe we can frame it better for the voting electorate if we go again, because I, you know, I was really surprised how significantly these referendums got beat in this village. So, and I'm just putting it out there, we maybe need to do better PR to the nonbelievers or, or something like that, I don't know.
Appreciate that. Trustee, a little one.
Well, you know, what I think what was happening in the past was that the information wasn't available to the people before, and that nobody really knew what the short-term or long-term goes, or they didn't know what was going on with the water infrastructure and the streets event. But now that we got a plan here, I mean, people will be aware now, they'll see the awareness, they'll understand a little bit better why you need to do this.
So what can we do, I mean, as residents? I mean, this isn't something I think you just throw to the board, to the trustees, and a mayor, and say, okay, fix this floors, and this is something the residents have to, have to get on board with, otherwise it's just not going to work, it's a small village, you know?
And it comes back to what trustee said earlier about, okay, we have the plan, we still have to figure out a way to pay for it. I'm on board with it, you're on board, hopefully a number of people in the audience are on board with it, and yes, we have to do a better job, because the reality was, the results were, that people didn't want to part with additional money and tax dollars.
Can I give?
So we've gotten to this point. We have new blood on the board, and some new ideas, and maybe they'll have the persuasive effect to the rest of the residents. You know, bottom line, I think collectively, all seven of us, and the people who are here and taking their time out, I appreciate that, to understand, you know, for, for all the people who voted no, and didn't have enough information, yeah, I look at that and say, okay, that was a shortcoming at that time. But then I look at all the people who, with the information available, found that to be sufficient to convince them to vote. So apparently, they thought there was enough information out there. So it wasn't like everybody was against it, and nobody was for it, there's black people like yourself, myself, go for it.
Anyway, I think this is a great start. As long as we're moving forward.
I know Amy must have said something first.
I thought, you know, just that maybe we need to do some attendance at some of the owner, homeowners meetings, you know, maybe that's something that we can do with Volta Green, Acacia, Indian Ridge, our Chestnut on the Green, Indian Wood, Mr. Blais, you know, down there, I forget the name of it, but talking to the homeowners association, so people understand what's going on. If they don't make it here to the meeting, maybe they'll make it to the each other's meetings, and I think that's an effective way, or, you know, some social gatherings, maybe we can go to and talk a little bit about why we want to do this.
And I just want to reiterate, Lou, I agree wholeheartedly with you, and I know you have this idea, which is, good streets that aren't my street are still good for everybody in town. So my fear is, people are going to look at this and say, well, mine's not one of these nine streets, so I'm never voting for it, my water main isn't on this, so I'm not, and I, maybe I, you know, I think that's what, I fear that's what's going to happen, is people will say, well, it doesn't benefit me, I'm not on there, so I'm not, why should I vote for it? So, but there may be to get a new street, and I hope that's not the case. I think we have to convince everybody that fixing your street, or anybody's street here, is good for all of us.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of like with schools. I'm a big believer that if your school's are good, your community's good. And property values are reflected in things, so we kind of have to make this, to you say, this is good, regardless of where you live in Indian Head Park, this is a good thing to do, because it's the future, and it's, you know, preserving and making things better.
Sue Kylie, 105 Edge Report. I was just at the Ashbrook homeowners board meeting, whatever. As far as attending those meetings, very small attendance, and any of them, I mean, you're going to get very few people. People that show up are the people that are gripes, that's it. But one of the, one of the guys there went on and on and on about the streets, you know, and they're so terrible, and why can't we do anything about this? And I said, and how many referendums have you voted for? And that, that's the problem, that's exactly what Mr. Mead here has said. But you have to get the positive, as soon as you get into the fifth paragraph about how this is going to affect your taxes, that's it, you've lost people. But if you, if you say, if it's not your street, it's your neighbor's street, that still raises your property value. You know, you have to make them see that this, you have to just point out the positive and forget the tax part of it. It's only going to raise your taxes as much, just talk about the positive. But one of the guys there at this meeting said, if they would give us a referendum and say, these tax dollars will go to improve the streets, I would vote yes.
Thank you. Anybody else?
About twelve years ago, the Highlands School District went for a referendum, and I know that serves part of Indian Head Park, and it failed the first year. And I believe part of the effort was for involvement of the community. The second time, the next year, when it went for a referendum, there was about fifty volunteers that worked on the effort. They had a publicity group, they had a traveling road show group, they had people signing up voters to help like-minded people to go get registered to vote, and then they had a group driving people to the polls. So it was really a big effort. We were lucky, Kim Williams, who had somebody who had done that for her career, helped the district out to do that. So it took the village to, took the whole district to do that. So if, I'm bringing that up, because in the future, we may need everybody's help here that's not in their head, yes, I think there are a few maybe not in their, no, but anyway, the people that are not in, yes, you know, we may need your help. And Chris, you, I think you had great points, you know, hopefully you can help us as we get into that future. So again, I think it takes a whole village.
Point of grace, thank you. One more, and then you know what? We're, we're starting to get a field of what we should cover, have another board meeting and/or a town hall meeting, so I'm going to take Mr. McCarthy's input, and then we're going to move on to the next agenda item, and I appreciate the input.
In framing this for the board as a point of reference, I think as a resident, there's definitely a difference between the negative publicity attached to the Tribune article about home rule, taxes that go on forever, as opposed to a finite term for a bond for this project. So I think we can break it down to a specific need for a specific time. I think it stands a better chance.
Okay, thank you. Okay, as I said, folks, I appreciate the input, and we, we're, one more step along the road to finding a solution. Next item of business is a discussion regarding finance committee. We talked about this last time, and tabled, you know, some discussion, the idea of creating a finance committee that involves residents. And what my thoughts were was to have a finance committee, or advisory group, as I prefer to call it at that time, that was comprised of our finance trustees, we primarily did trustee Schmaffer, and trustee O'Laughlin as backup on that, and Dave Brink, and Frank Alonso as administrator, and two residents that could get together and look at the village finances in regards to, you know, the budget, where's the revenue coming, what do we, you know, what should we do? Input like that to make, you know, help with the budget process and make a recommendation. That's not an entity that's going to say, okay, this is, this is going to be, and the situation is, is that, as we discussed earlier about Open Meetings Act, if we create a formal committee, then it becomes subject to the Open Meetings Act, then it has to be scheduled out, you have to have an agenda posted forty-eight hours in advance, you have to have somebody taking the minutes, you know, recording it, and preparing it, you know, a draft copy that is ultimately approved. And that presents some logistical issues. And so I said, well, let me do some survey, let's talk to some of our sister communities in the West Central Municipal Conference, find out what's going on in other communities. And I know I didn't talk to all the same people that a couple of the trustees mentioned that they had, you know, they had examples of where they exist. Well, I, I've learned from, in the West Central Municipal Conference, is like basically our area, and going up toward our area, the west side of Cook County, includes places like Burr Ridge, and Western Springs, LaGrange Park, Wood Range, Hodgkins, McCoke, and so forth, and going up toward Franklin Park, Northlake, and so on. And what I learned, and what council had told me, I probably would, would learn, is that there aren't any informal advisory committees used by any towns out there for any purpose, let alone budget or finance, they don't have them. So I followed it up, and I wished I would have done it first time around, but a pretty much similar response, asking if they had a finance or a budget committee. And, you know, I'll tell you, I think it's ten, twelve responses, you know, people I talked to, that they have, to the extent that they have them, some don't. LaGrange does not, Western Springs, I believe, does, and so does Burr Ridge. So it's not like everybody has it. But what I found interesting is where it does exist, the people on the committee are the elected officials. There's three trustees, there's two trustees, it's consistent with trustee Whittenburg mentioned about maybe a committee of the whole, the finance, and hot committee. So the point is, how do we get this resident involvement? And I was trying to avoid having the limitations on them, so that they could get together at their convenience, not trying to avoid the Open Meetings Act. So if anybody went away, or has heard somebody characterize my comments that way, then they weren't paying attention, and they misunderstood. I'm not against open meetings, I wanted to facilitate the process. So there's a couple of options. But having reflected on it, I think there's some people who are for it, some people who are against it, don't think you need, at the end of the day, there's so much money and so many things that need to be spent. I am not against having resident input. So now that I've got an input from, from council, from our trustees, and I've gotten some feedback from other villages, I'm prepared to propose that we establish a finance committee that would consist of, as I said before, two residents, two trustees, and the two people in the office responsible for it. The two trustees are Norm and Brenda, and Dave Brink, and Frank Alonso, and then two other, two residents to come in and help work on the budget, starting from the point in time where the staff can put together at least an initial budget, say, you know, here's the best we have, but then from that point, have the meetings, and work on the budget, and then ultimately, it, it comes to the board to pass. It's the board's responsibility to prepare, you know, finalize that budget. So I'm not against that, so that would be the proposal I have, that I would like to go forward with, that that would ultimately end up with, you know, them having their formal meetings, that there's some logistics there that, you know, look for people to appoint to the, to residents. I think one of the things would be, our staff is here during the day, and so it might be a requirement, or at least a request, not all the time, but some of the time, for people to be able to meet during the day. And it might be occasional, we have to have staffs work in the evening. So there's going to be costs to it in some fashion, but, you know, if that's, if that's what the board wants to set as a policy, that would be my proposal. So I'll, I'll put it open to discussion, and I know trustee Whittenburg wants to talk, because I had asked her earlier this week for some input, different questions, so I'll let her.
So just one suggestion, something I did find out, it was a little bit of a nuance with what Western Springs does. Countryside has a finance committee, Burr Ridge has many committees and commissions, but they do not have a finance committee, and Countryside does, so two out of the three that I looked at.
Okay, can I just ask a question, though? Because I want to know, does Countryside, are you, do they have residents, or are they all, they're all elected?
Well, and I'm just going to give you that nuance, because I found out more.
Okay, go ahead.
So Countryside has two, three aldermen on their finance committee, the treasurer, and then their finance director. They have three aldermen and two staff. Western Springs is different in that they have standing committees, they call them standing committees. This is all. This is all in their ordinance online under the Sterling website. They have, I think, around seven, general government, finance, public works, water, properties, recreation, public safety, health, climate zoning, community. These are not commissions, they are committees, so they differ in their role.